Item C three is the approval of special meeting minutes from October twentieth, twenty-five, and November third, twenty-two, five. Item C four is the approval of the closed session meeting minutes from November third, twenty-two, five. You should have them on your desk and in a different colored piece of paper. And the city clerk will take those up after the meeting. Item C five is Mill Street Park Lot, amendment to the lease agreement. I want you to make note that there is the first amendment to the lease agreement laying on your desk. These are a few edits that Mayor Perrett had made, and we talked to the company today, and they made the edits and sent this back there. So, the second lease is Mill Street Park Lot from Belmont Land and Investment. We're operating on an annual automatic renewal, and so they provided a letter of written notice of non-renewal of this lease. And so, they asked to move to month-to-month. And so, this is what the first amendment to this lease agreement is this time. Item C six is the consideration of corporate ordinance to close a portion of Laneway Street for our carriage rides. The date for the carriage rides coming up is Friday, December nineteenth, five p.m. to nine p.m. Saturday, December twentieth, twenty-two, five, four p.m. to eight p.m. And Sunday, December twenty-first, twenty-two, five, four p.m. to eight p.m. There's also a map showing where those carriage rides dropped along with the barricades at the place. Item C seven is the police department's weapon surplus request. These are for thing thirty-one, remit capable of shooting twelve-bit shotguns that the police department no longer uses, and asks to have these items surplus. Item C eight is a resolution to apply for the state revolving fund funding. This is due to funding for Hurricane Elaine relief from North Carolina Division of Water and Infrastructure. We plan to apply for, you can apply for up to ten million dollars in loan funding with a hundred percent credible forgiveness. What we plan to do is apply for the grant to help uncover our freshwater intake from the Taba River. We've got some with salt and sand to intake at this point, and so we need to dredge the intake. Plus, we plan to design another intake location in a different area. The current intakes have a lot of the island, and there's a lot of salt and sand that gets deposited there, so in future events, we'd like to move it out to another area. So, that's what we plan to apply for SRF funding. And item C nine is a budget amendment for our wastewater treatment plant. We have various pieces of equipment that have broken or in failure at this moment. It's the bar screen, the grit chamber, the return activated sludge, which is called the RAS pump, and the digesting blower. And so, fortunately, they're a hundred percent idols. They are, I think a couple of them are on the actual CIP, but in years in the future, so we're breaking now, we need to place them. And the dollar figure for this budget amendment is four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And those are the nine items for consent. Mayor Perrett, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Miles about items on the consent agenda? Okay, I just have a few. I had made some edits to the reading minutes, but I think there's one additional change that needs to be made from November third, reading minutes on page seven. The second bullet under key changes, the word should be reduction instead of deduction. With respect to the First Amendment to the lease agreement, just to be clear, the only change for now is that we're entering into the same contract on a month-to-month basis while we renegotiate the rental rate down the road. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's on a month-to-month basis at this point. The company is going to look at all three of our park lots that we lease from them to determine what the rate should be and what kind of increase we need to see in the future. They're hiring a third-party company to actually do this for us. Speaking of today, and I told them I would like to have plenty of time to digest this and to work through the budget process next year if our policy was to have a mid-year budget change, if the rates change at all. It could go down.
And then, with respect to the resolution to apply for the state revolving fund, uh, grant, I'm just curious, you said a hundred percent credible forgiveness. What does that mean?
It means that, um, belonging will be fully taken at the end of the term.
That's all the questions I have. Anyone else? All right, very well, that concludes the work session. So, I will now recall the regular city council meeting for the city of Belmont for December first, twenty-twenty-five to order. First, we will have our invocation. If everyone will please rise, the invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Mike Phillips with South Point Baptist Church.
Thank you, Mayor Perrett, and the city council for allowing me to be here. Let's pray together. Father, in the name of our Lord Jesus, we thank you for tonight, and we thank you for this season. We lit our Christmas tree tonight to begin the celebration, we've got a parade tomorrow. Father, we celebrate your son who came to save his people from their sins, and we're so grateful for that. But Father, also, in your economy, you have established governing authorities, and Scripture talks about that in the Romans. And so, tonight, what I will pray for these men and women, that you set aside as we are in Belmont, that God, I pray that you give them wisdom and knowledge to make, uh, to just make godly decisions that benefit the whole of Belmont and all of the people. God, thank you for their faithfulness and their willingness to serve. You would just ask your favor, bless upon them, and bless upon this meeting tonight, that everyone will be able to be heard, and they'll be able to make just the decisions that will benefit Belmont. So, may trust this time to you. And thank you, Father, for your goodness, again, thank you for the season, and for your Jesus.
Thank you, Pastor Phillips. These are main standing. Councilman Catherine Lewis will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Seated? We have, before we begin with the rest of the agenda, we have several recognition and acknowledgements, so it'll be just a minute. I will re-materialize at the podium. All right, I'm not used to being here, but we first want to thank outgoing Councilwoman Catherine Lewis for, this will be her last meeting as she's stepping down, but I certainly want to thank Catherine for stepping up, feeling willing to serve, and filling the remainder of Councilwoman Turner's council term. I certainly think, having gotten to know you and gone through everything over the years, I feel like this is more than you might have initially bargained for. But I also think you acclimated yourself, and you got more comfortable in the role, and you were a valuable colleague to all of us. We had a great time together. We appreciated your service and all of your contributions to the city, to this council, and we just want to show our appreciation to you as a good friend and colleague over these years. We'll certainly miss you. And at this time, I will ask any of my colleagues, any additional thoughts to share?
I would just echo Jim's comments. I mean, we're so grateful for your service, Catherine. You know, it's a big commitment, it's a obligation. I think a lot of people don't realize all the time it goes into what we do, get calls to do, you know, much more than just a couple meetings a month. And I want to thank your family, because it is a commitment, and it's taking time away from things that, you know, a lot of us have to do outside of council work, but we're just really grateful for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to echo what Jason said. I think you've been a great asset to the community, not just this council, your knowledge, and really your personality, and it pertains to outreach into this community, it's really on that. So, I really appreciate my time working with you. You know, I think I can speak, you know, have related to Mayor Richard Turner as well, I think be extremely proud of your work that you've done for this city, so I really appreciate it.
Thanks. We're gonna miss you. Thank you for bringing the personality like Alan says.
Happy birthday, Charlie. So, if you want to come up, Catherine, you have a plaque in your honor, commemoration for your service in Belmont. If you want to say a few words.
I know, I wrote it down. Um, do I say it? Whatever's more comfortable. I'll go back to my seat. Talk to the seat, everybody. All right, I just want to say thank you to Belmont, the community, and current council for trusting me and appointing me to serve as councilwoman these past two years. It truly has been one of the greatest honors of my life. Getting to know each one of you on council has been such a gift, not only to you, my colleagues, but your people, and grateful to all friends. I'm thankful for God's guidance throughout this journey, and for the peace he's given me in every season of service. To my family and my dear friends, thank you for standing beside me, lifting me up, and reminding me of what matters the most along the way. Congratulations to Mark, Alex, and to our new mayor Joe. I'm excited to see the leadership and heart you guys have brought into our city and back to us. When you guys stand, or this is a quote that I wrote, "When you stand on truth and choose integrity, the path may be narrow, but it's always worth walking." Because choosing truth isn't always the easiest road, but it's the one that leads to peace, purpose, and the conduct of leadership that truly serves people well. I just really thank everybody. This has been a wild ride, but I've been doing everything I've ever done. I feel like I just got my toes led, so I thank you so much for everything. Miles, thank you. Parks, thank you. Laura, thank you.
We also want to take tonight to recognize that this is the expiration of what would have been Richard Turner's mayoral term, and so we want to pause and reflect both on his sad passing and his tremendous contributions to the city of Belmont over the years. Richard was a valiant colleague and friend to all of us, and he made so many contributions to the city of Belmont over the years that we continue to honor his memory and miss his contributions to the city. And again, I'll turn it over to anyone else on council who knows anything about.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll start here, and I think, you know, I think, you know, each one of us, you know, pre, you know, before, is current, have their own unique ways of conducting the business of the city, and I think Richard had that unique way of being real with my own people. And I think that's represented in what he, how he presented himself in ways that, you know, he wanted to get into the mud, he was more the one that would always take the higher path. And his leadership is missed, but Jim, I also want to say too, thank you as well, too, which I'm able to get to that. So, I don't want to shadow what you've done, but I do also want to acknowledge, you know, there is still a hole here in the city of Belmont without Richard Turner.
I would agree. You know, dear friends, all of us sorely missed his leadership. Alex, as you said, was just unimaginable, and he was such a man of high integrity and character, and there were no bigger fan of Belmont than Richard. And I know that that is example will carry us forward. Jim, we've just seen his leadership, and Joe, you know, coming on board, I think Richard has provided that great example of leadership and character that we all want to have and continue to leave us here in Belmont. And you think, Charlie, Catherine?
Yeah, as you guys have said, he definitely missed every single day. I always talk about, Richard had this superpower where he could make anybody feel important. He was talking to you, you always felt important, he always seemed to give you his undivided attention, and that's one of the things that I want to support, having known him, speaking about trying to do like that as best I can, so we miss Richard.
Yeah, I'll echo what Jason said, Richard was, I feel like I got short-changed a little bit. I got to know him just a tad in the very beginning when I started, and he was all-in. It was almost like he was a father figure type. I mean, he was just, he was the sweetest man, and he was very encouraging, and like Charlie said, he'll make you feel like you are something. And when he, you know, had talked to me about the possibility of, you know, thinking about, you know, on councils, he just said that you need to always keep your integrity and have morals when you go up there and you speak, and just be yourself, and he said, and everything else will fall into place. So, I just, I appreciate that, and his very willingness. But Jim and I will also echo what they said, you've done a great job. There'll never be anyone that can fulfill what Richard is for Belmont, but you have done one heck of a job doing the job that he couldn't finish.
Thank you, everyone. And unfortunately, Richard's wife Marie and his daughter Anna were unable to be here tonight, but his sons Vincent and Matthew are here, and if you want to stand and be recognized at this time. Thank you for sharing your fatherhood with us in the city of Belmont. All right, so now I'm back over here, and with that, covering the recognitions and acknowledgements, we will entertain a motion to set the agenda, but we do have one application that this city manager will tell us about.
I sent you all last week a document that says it's the amendment to the contract, amendment to the contract to all of the accounts for Martin's and Associates, so I'd like to add that as item D four, if you so choose, and then I find it's directed by Jared Piles, who's got the detail.
Okay, thank you, Miles. With that said, if no one has any issues about entertaining the motion, set the agenda as modified with the addition of item D four, amendment to contract to all of the accounts. Martin Steiner is an associate CPA, he's PA. Motion by Jason, second by Charlie. All in favor? Aye. And he opposed. The agenda as modified is set, which brings us to item B one, organizational meeting, administer oaths of office to the mayor and city council members. And so, we'll start with the mayor, Joe Jordan.
Don't come on up. Before we begin, I just want to say it's an honor and pleasure to be here. Joe, it has been my pleasure getting to know you over the last few years, and, you know, this is one of the exciting things about the nation, the state, the town that we live in, is the ability to self-serve. And every time we have an election, it's an exciting time, because new leadership is elected, the will of the people has been spoken, and you're here, because these folks and many others have asked you to be here, and they cast their ballot for you, and they have hope that you will make this a better place, and we all hope and pray that for you. So, are you ready to take the oath?
I am.
All right. You'll repeat after me. I, Joe Jordan.
I, Joe Jordan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as mayor.
My duties as mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Mayor, you've got to make this official and sign this. I'm putting that over here with Mrs. Wilson. Let me get a picture with her. Before we go anywhere, I also have an acknowledgement that I would like to make before I take the seats, that I've been listening to for so long. Jim, we would like to acknowledge you, so if you would, please stand up so that we can use your just desserts, if you haven't had those in the last year and a half. Jim has become a good friend of mine, and I can tell you, Jim is a good friend of Belmont. He is someone that when Belmont called, Jim answered, and there are a lot of people that wouldn't do that. There are a lot of people that would not take the time out of the family, that wouldn't take the time out of their lives to answer the call of their needy city, and he did. And we are, as a city, in Jim's debt, and we thank you for everything that you've done. We thank you for your steady hand of leadership, which you have made so clear. I told Jim early on, I said, "The only thing that makes me nervous about being mayor is following you." That is true. So, Jim, thank you again from the city. I believe we have a black tree for that.
I think it's more comfortable for me to sit down and let Catherine face the audience. So, I guess, Mark, you'll have to wait just a little bit longer. With the swearing-in of our new mayor, Joe Jordan, tonight marks the end of my mayoral duties. The last eighteen months certainly did not unfold in the way that I anticipated. I did not sign up to be mayor, but it was my honor to fulfill the duties of the office in the wake of Mayor Turner's tragic passing. My primary intention was to bring stability to city government until the next mayor could be elected. However, I think this council has done far more than simply serve as a placeholder. We have tackled a number of challenges, and I believe laid the groundwork for the success of future councils. My guiding principle has been that the mayor should be like a good sports official. The best sports officials aren't even noticed. They let the game run smoothly and remain in the background, stepping in only when necessary to correct a problem. It's only the bad officials that people know by name. I guess the jury is still out as to whether what makes a good sports official also makes a good politician. That said, there's far more to being mayor than what you see at a council meeting. The mayor is usually the first one to hear bad news and then try to figure out how to deal with it. Beyond that, there's so much that goes on behind the scenes, whether it's meetings with staff, constituents, or third parties, appearances, or discussions with key stakeholders regarding the overall vision of the city. Of course, no one serves as mayor without the help of countless others. First and foremost, I want to thank my wife Nicole. If I didn't sign up to be mayor, she certainly didn't sign up to meet me mayor, but she has always been supportive, no matter how many times I've been called away from meetings on short notice, no matter how many dinners have been interrupted by phone calls related to city business, and no matter how much of our limited free time together has been impacted by my worrying about something going on in the city, even to the point of lying awake at night agonizing over a decision I had to make. It comforts me to know that no matter what happens, I can always count on at least one person's unconditional love and support. I love you. I also want to thank our city manager, Miles Braswell. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I believe we've had a very easygoing and productive relationship, gained insight into the workings of the city, and know that you are constantly striving to build on our successes and learn lessons from our setbacks. The city is in good hands. I also want to thank our city attorney, Parks Wilson, for all the assistance he's provided during this time. Parks has been a great counselor in more ways than one. To my colleagues, Alex, Jason, Charlie, Catherine, thank you all for believing in me and supporting me in this role, and for stepping up to face all the challenges the city's had to confront. We haven't necessarily had an easy time, but we haven't shied away from any tough issues either. We faced everything that has come before us head-on and consistently grappled with, debated, and decided all issues, no matter how horny or contentious. I'm proud of our time together and what we've accomplished, and I believe that future councils will come to appreciate our efforts as well. Thank you for being great colleagues and friends. I also want to thank our assistant city manager, Kevin Kraus, our department heads, and all of our city employees. We have so many talented individuals who come to work every day and do their best for the city. I've enjoyed the opportunities to interact with everyone, whether through staff celebrations, live fire training, or our police department's numerous community activities. The collective efforts of our great staff have enabled me to act as that envisioned sports official, remaining in the background as things run smoothly. Finally, I want to thank the residents of Belmont for all of their support, both those who serve on our citizen advisory boards and the public in general. So often in this position, you only hear the complaints, so to everyone who took even ten seconds to thank me for stepping up or to tell me that I was doing a good job, it really did mean a lot. I assure you, I've given this role everything I've had for the past eighteen months. Whether you agree with every decision I made or not, I've always tried to thoroughly prepare and look at the issues from different angles before making the decision I believe is best for the city. I apologize to anyone I've let down or disappointed. Overall, however, I'm proud of what the council has accomplished. Now it's time for a new mayor, so I extend my congratulations to Joe. I still have two years remaining on my council term, so I won't be going anywhere, as I'm in my third location already tonight. In fact, Joe, you will have not one, but two former mayors on council, so you are going to have more advice than you know what to do with it. But in all seriousness, I look forward to working with you and helping you implement your vision for Belmont. These last eighteen months have been memorable, both in my own life and in the life of Belmont. For better or worse, this has been a unique moment in time that will never be repeated, but now it's come to an end. Thank you.
I would like that. Unique presence. Now, first I'll say it's a good thing he's not going anywhere, but Jim, you know, we obviously acknowledge Richard, and, you know, again, the area that he particularly, we even talked about this today, that he left behind, but what I appreciate about you is as you came in here and you did, you right, you were, you ran this as Jim would, and I highly appreciate that, and I think if there was anyone that was even a possible to fill Richard's seat, I think you'd be the one to do it. And I think he's extremely proud of the way that you did handle the situation with the city. On a more personal note, Jim, I think you played that very non-biased position very well. You were the referee even though you did intepated discussions, and we don't always agree, but that's okay, because we can still be friends at the end of the day. But I think you, like I said, I wouldn't want anyone else to leave the city during our situation during those times, and you're absolutely right. We have come over, overcome a lot of challenges. This hasn't been a lamed-up council. You have been at the helm to get through some of the hardest points that the city has faced, and that's your leadership, and then that's your friendship as well. So, Jim, I really appreciate everything you have done and everything you will continue to do. And now you're back in the boxing ring. So, now you can start making motions and touchdowns and such, so, but thank you for everything you've done for us, Jim.
Thank you. I would say much the same, Jim. You've been the best. You've been a constant professional, and I've never seen anybody as prepared as this guy coming out of the remains. I mean, if we all were half as prepared as Jim, then Belmont will continue to be in great shape. But I think just Alex's point, Mayor Turner would be extremely proud of the job that you've done, and I think Belmont does, and you would have a gratitude as well, because this city has, you have shepherd us through, you know, some difficult challenges and some good times. And then they're kind of significant, and keep that level of faith going one way, and I just hope we have two more years of trying to stump you, trying to come up with some, I mean, we've got to come up with a mascot somewhere.
Certainly not college.
Yeah, we haven't had a whole lot of luck with that yet. We're going to continue trying. Thank you so much, and really appreciate your service.
I'll keep it short this weekend. Taking up the mantle, and I'm very proud of all, it's very obvious of all the work you put into this in the wake of Richard's passing. I don't know anybody that had a bad thing to say about it.
I couldn't think of a positive.
I'm very proud of you, and just thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, you are, I'm sorry, guys, you're probably going to be the number-one person I miss the most on council, because you always made me hold my own. You never taught me to follow but to lead for myself, speak for myself, and it's so appreciated, because it's such a pride. It's such an easy thing to do, to follow and not to lead. And you are such a leader for this group, and you're right, this is probably the hardest eighteen months for all of us. I've not been on council ever in my life, but from what I've heard, this has been a wild ride for everybody, and you have shepherd us, just like Alex said, in such a way that has been so graceful, and you have been professional through it all, but you've also been gentle, and you've been a friend, and I cannot thank you enough for everything you've taught me. My most favorite memory with you was at our retreat, and, you know, Jim and I are a lot alike, believe it or not. I'm just the talker, and he's not, and...
Depends on the topic.
Depends on the topic. This is very tricky. But we were sitting in the workshop, and I was getting a little A D D, and he possibly was as well, and we were sitting there, and I would give him a challenge. I would say, "All right, Jim," because he's super intelligent, he's so smart, and it's just so intriguing, and I was like, "All right, Jim, I want you to give me all the states in alphabetical order, and I want you to put the capitals beside each one, and I'm going to time you to see how fast you can do it." He did it in, what was it, sixty-two seconds?
I don't know.
He is so smart, he's so smart, but no, and also he's just, you've been such a leader, and I couldn't imagine anybody else filling the shoes of Richard better than you have, and we're just so thankful for everything. And Nicole, thank you for taking the stride with him, because I know it was not easy, because he worked tirelessly. He wasn't just a ribbon cutter, he did so much. A mayor is not just a ribbon cutter. A lot of people have that reconceived notion, but you did a lot of work, and you did a lot of work for the citizens too, and I'm thankful for that. So thank you, Jim, for everything.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we will continue with our council.
Well, it's an exciting night in Belmont. I want to thank Mark and Alex for inviting me to be here. For those of you who don't know, my name's Jonathan Fletcher. I'm the Register of Deeds for the county. I don't get a fancy robe like Judge Davis, but I do have a seal, so I'm going to count that as pretty cool, so, thank you again. And one thing I like to say, part of my job as a Register of Dees, we administer oaths all day long. Hundreds of people a year come into our office for oaths that we administer. But I'd like to take a second and mention that the general statutes talk about how, when you're taking an oath, especially one like this, it should be a very solemn occasion. And that doesn't mean that it should be sad, it just means that it should be something that's done with dignity and respect because of the importance of what's being done here tonight. So I appreciate the opportunity, and William is the boss, in case you didn't know. He's always got something to say. But we're, are you ready to take the oath?
Yes.
All right, we're going to begin with the Bible, and if you will raise your right hand, just go hold the Bible. You've got to hold it, Winston. Wonderful. Hold it up again. All right, a little higher. There we go. All right, raise your right hand. I am stating my name.
I am Mark Seelinger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as councilperson.
My duties as councilperson.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I'd like to introduce your members.
So this is my wife, Cherry, Winston, and William is the one. You'll see them again in four years.
I am stating my name.
I am Alex.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as councilperson.
My duties as councilperson.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yes, sure. This is my wife, Maddie, and this is our son, Fielding. We call him Fielding.
All right, so we're all official. My thanks to Judge Davis and to Jonathan for spending time with us this evening to administer the oaths of the incoming members. It's greatly appreciated, and it is, it's a special thing, so, again, our thanks for that. So that will move us on to Item B two of our organization meeting, election of council members to serve as mayor pro temp. Most of the council here has been through this process before, but for the education and knowledge of people listening in, this is controlled by the City Council Rules of Procedure thirty-eight P, and it's very short, so I will read it. Nomination and voting procedure. The council shall use the following procedure to fill vacancy in the council itself or in any other body which it has the power of appointment. The mayor shall open the floor for nominations from among those individuals who have applied for vacant positions, whereupon council members may look forward and debate nominees. When the debate ends, the mayor calls, shall call the roll of members, and each member shall pass a vote for his or her nominee. The voting shall continue until a nominee receives a majority of the votes cast during a single ballot. So at this point, I will open the floor for nominations for mayor pro temp.
Nominee Mark Seelinger.
Second.
All right, so we will go down the roll and vote individually for Mark and Alex. First. So we have unanimous vote, so I will have, request a motion that Mark be appointed as mayor pro temp. And Jason, and seconded by Charlie, so the, all in favor?
I am.
Are you opposed? All right, so it passes unanimously. Congratulations.
All right.
Oh, is there, he had taken oath, I think, as mayor pro temp. Yes?
Is there an oath?
There is.
Two oaths. A popular man.
Jonathan, you want to do another one? Think of your still here.
Okay, here we go. You ready?
Yes.
I am stating my name.
I am Mark Seelinger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as mayor pro temp.
My duties as mayor pro temp.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Mark. All right, moving right along, Item B three, appointment of elected officials to board committees for twenty-six. In the packet, there is a list of the individual committees, and I think we'll kind of just go, I'll hook this up for discussion, to see who would be interested in which committee. I know there's already some names that are filling out. If you'd like to stay, we're absolutely happy to have you stay in the committee. But what I will do is just start at the top. Stormwater Committee, Watership Board, Governor's State, Mayor of the City Council. Central Carolina Regional Council Board of Delegates. Apparently, we have two, a delegate and an alternate. So Charlie, you were the delegate, and feel free to say, and then an alternate. Alex, you were an alternate. Do we have any members that would...
Do we know when they meet?
Mark, do you know?
Because I've spoken with Geraldine Gardner, she spoke with me and said, "Well, we'd really like you all to have someone, you know, be there," so I'm, I think they meet the evenings. I'd be willing to do that.
I would go for it.
I'll do that one.
Thank you, Jim. Alex, would you be staying on?
Unless someone else wants to be the alternate. Does anybody else want to be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate. So Charlie, you'll be the alternate? Jim, okay. Belmont Tourism Development Authority, do you currently own that?
I do.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Gaston Cleveland, Lincoln, MPO.
I would like to stay as the main delegate. I have a potential opportunity, known for vice chair, I believe, for this organization, so unless anyone else has any major objections.
Any objections? All right, do we have anyone for an alternate?
I will stay alternate unless somebody just really wants to be the alternate.
We'll circle it. All right. All right, now, Belmont Tourism and Belmont Development.
I was interested in that one. I wonder if they can sit there.
Yeah. Jason, would you like to stay on that?
Yes, please.
Keep Belmont Beautiful Board of Directors.
I'll stay on that.
Okay.
When do they meet? They meet on Thursdays, usually around six-thirty at evenings, but it's once a month. I don't know exactly which week, I can't recall that right offhand. But we need to have a replacement there. And then captaincy or an alternate.
All right, let's circle back to that.
Okay.
I'll leave alternate for now.
Okay.
Make sure you buy the report downtown Belmont Development Association. I would love to be on that.
I will step down from that one. I'm not able to meet the commitments of work. They need at four o'clock, and it's just too difficult for me to get off work at that time.
That's fine. Jim, do you have any preference?
I'm happy to stay.
Unless anybody else?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Belmont Charlie, Jim, you're on it now. Would you like to stay? I would also be open to that one, but would you want to stay?
Um, if you're open to it, that's the title.
Take your place on that. All right, deals up, please, on to Parks and Recreation System Advisory Board. So we have one vacancy there. Charlie, you're currently on the count. I'll stay on.
I am.
Mark, you ready?
I mean, yeah, that's, that's, we, because I'd be interested, they meet Wednesday night, we have two, so I can fill Catherine's vacancy, and Charlie can help the other one.
Thank you, Jim. All right, these on to Environmental Sustainability Board. Alex, you are currently doing that, all right.
I'll stay on that, unless someone else wants to.
Thank you. Southern Gas and County Municipal Alliance, Alex and Jason are currently on that.
So just for those who aren't familiar with it, this is basically an agreement that was signed between Belmont and Prime Lieutenant and the Cabinet, so, three municipalities where we try to get together to increase our voting, to get better road improvements in our area. Now, we haven't met in a while, but I did talk to Nelson right after the election, and he does want to hear this one back up, so I'd like to stay on it, just to see this one through.
I'd be all right. Thank you. Transportation Advisory Committee, Jason, I know you've been on that.
Yep.
I'll say something, you want to?
Yes.
Or maybe I'll have a debate at the city, if anyone's interested in that.
I can, maybe quarterly, right?
Quarterly, yeah.
Yeah.
She's like ten a.m., Shelby, Thursday, twelve.
We'll give you an excuse to go to Shelby. Yeah, yeah. They'll put a notice out there, and then Shelby.
All right, yes. See, Jim, you're currently on that.
Yeah, I think I need to continue, because that's with the county, and I think I specifically have been appointed to that.
Yeah.
So it has to be me.
Five years, or?
It's a three-year term. And then...
We got to get that in like thirty to fifty years.
Yeah, eventually, like Stanley's going to get about twenty-sixty or something, but we started at the top of the alphabet, so I think that term will be up in early twenty-twenty-seven, and then I'll go to Festival City.
I think so. Okay, so I think that only leads to Keep Belmont Beautiful. I'll be happy to do that. Okay, that was quick.
Was it quicker than the MPO?
The only one I had, Mark, is Keep Belmont Beautiful.
Okay.
All right.
So show you again.
So that was quick. Mark, would you be willing to read back who you have on each before we entertain motions to sit down?
I have the Stormwater Committee, it's Mayor and City Council. Central Carolina Regional Council is Jim and Charlie. And then the Gaston Cleveland MPO, keep it the same with Alex and Charlie. Belmont Tourism, Mark and Jason. Keep Belmont Beautiful, Jason and Joe. Main Street, Joe and Jim. Belmont Trolley, Joe. Parks and Rec, Jim and Charlie. The Environmental Sustainability Board, Alex. Southeastern, Gaston. County Municipal Alliance, Alex and Jason. The Transportation Advisory Committee, Mark and Jason. And then the Gaston County, Jim and Charlie.
Is there any initial discussion or questions we'll address? There are none. I will entertain a motion to approve this.
I made that motion.
Second. All right, Alex, and seconded by Charlie. All in favor?
I am.
All opposed? All right, passing unanimously. Thank you. Okay, um, back to our agenda, B four, adoption of a resolution establishing a regular meeting dates of Belmont City Council for twenty twenty six. Uh, those are in the packet, I will open the discussion on the dates presented.
The, just wanted to throw it out, so, just to talk to you all about this, on the workshops, starting at five PM, and obviously my furniture and stuff, is any opening or any, potentially push that back?
Yeah.
It's becoming diffi- more and more difficult, I think you have an issue too, with trying to get yours right at five o'clock.
What do you, what do you want to push it back to?
I don't know, I wanted to...
Well, if we did that at the same time as our regular meetings, that would be...
It'd seem like it would make more sense.
Yes.
Do it at six o'clock?
I was...
I'd want to move it up to four PM, but... I was, just for staffs, um, you know, they, they're, they're here during the workshops, during the regular, regular meeting minute, I mean, regular meeting times, um, but, I mean, it's up to you all, go and move it, that's...
Uh, Parks, question on that, so is that time set in the procedure?
No. We just changed the, uh, rules procedure to, it was at four PM, and then we changed it to five, so we'll have to amend it again, change it to, to new time.
It is, and it's, it's just been changed. Yeah, that's why I thought it was in there, so why not?
Would it help if it was five thirty, for staff? Five thirty's fine, yeah, we did it five thirty. If that works for you all.
Yeah, five thirty's at least better than five.
Yeah. Uh, let me ask you this, because it's not on the agenda, that's not something that we can amend tonight, correct? Correct.
You can just put on consent.
Consent, okay. So do we need to make a motion to do that?
No, I put it on there.
Is everybody okay with five thirty?
Yeah. We just need a motion to then approve the resolution modified, unless anyone else has anything of...
Yeah, there's been other questions? Okay, well, entertain that motion, Jim, I'll, yeah, I'll... Okay, motion made by Jim?
Second.
Seconded by Alex, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, it's adopted, doesn't modify it. Thank you. Alright, so that takes us to section C, the consent agenda, uh, this conference has already gone through the, uh, meeting prior, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second, motion by Alex, and seconded by Jason. Alright, all in favor?
Um...
Any opposed? Alright, and it is approved, should be announced. Alright, so that takes us to section D, uh, of our agenda, uh, D one, public comments. So we have, anyone signed, we have all the comments. Thanks, Jim. Uh, we did, we have one, and it's for, oh, I'm sorry, oh, this is for, uh, oh, okay, so don't be honest, okay. So there's no more signed public comment, so with that, we will move to, uh, agenda item D two. Public hearing for ZA two zero two five point two zero six gate of road, outfit seeking for relinquish Belmont zoning designation from a portion of three abutting parcels, one eight nine eight five, one eight nine eight five six, and two two one five three three. Um, so do I have a motion to go into public hearing? Motion to go into public hearing, second, motion by Alex, seconded by Charlie, so we are in.
Well, we got a whole...
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are in public hearing. Uh, I believe that we have the presentation from staff.
Uh, good evening, nice to meet you all, uh, council members, my name is Chester Jones, I'm one of the planners here at the Planning Department, um, look forward to working with you. Uh, not very straightforward, uh, presentation for you all tonight, as well as the applicant, uh, their representatives are here to answer any questions that you have for them. Uh, so once again, we're, this is a public hearing for, uh, ZA twenty twenty five point two six, gate of road is a zoning map amendment, looking to relinquish Belmont's, um, zoning designation over a portion of three abutting parcels. A brief background, um, Clean Self Storage LLC applied to relinquish Belmont zoning designation, which is rural residential, uh, over a portion of three abutting parcels located at two nine eight gate of road, two nine, that's a typo, two nine six gate of road, and an un- an unassigned parcel, uh, directly abutting at, um, supporting some storage. All, uh, as all three of these parcels have split zoning designation, meaning they contain two different, um, zoning entities over them, uh, between the city of Belmont and Gaston County, the applicant is proposing an amendment to unify these parcels under Gaston County's, uh, zoning designation. On your screen here, you can see, uh, a screenshot of the, um, an aerial of the subject parcels, as well as dividing line indicating which parts are under Belmont zoning designation, and the respective zoning designations of, uh, the parcels, the, the frontage. So, um, you see that black line kind of going through, uh, three of those parcels, that is a dividing line showing, that is, um, from that portion backwards, uh, interior to the lot, that is, um, Belmont zoning, uh, designation for rural residential. The parts of the lots that have frontage are either, uh, rural R one, or, uh, uh, C three, um, commercial three, Gaston County. Uh, any questions before I move on, is that very clear?
How did this happen to begin with?
Before my time, I don't know.
I wish it were that easy in my position to say, wow, before my time, I don't...
Not that, but, um, I do believe that, um, uh, from some of my research, when looking through this, uh, this, uh, request, that the Clean Self Storage was, uh, developed, uh, the, uh, the master plans for Gaston County, um, and so, that parking lot, retention bond, supporting, because of that nature, that was all developed under Gaston County, and, um, those portions, uh, that is RR, um, that is, that, um, that is the only ordinance that, you know, currently, um, the developer would have to contend with two different zoning ordinances, with they chose to develop. I'm trying to answer your question, uh...
Yeah.
Jim, did I answer it?
Well, I, it's, it's perplexing.
It is, it is.
Vaxing.
Very much so.
Yes.
We have one lot with two zoning designations, one through Belmont ETJ, and one through Gaston.
Well, we have three lots.
These are three.
Right? So this crosses three lots.
Hmm. Um, I want to show you a little bit its location, um, where it stands, uh, within Belmont, in relation to Belmont Municipal Limits, it's actually not named, it's in our extra territorial jurisdiction, also known as our ETJ. Um, and so you can see it right on the edge of that purple there, it would, uh, be located in our ETJ, right on the edge of Gaston County's, uh, zone. On October twenty twenty, uh, on October twenty third, twenty twenty five, Belmont Planning Board voted five zero to, uh, recommend this zoning map amendment, and, uh, call to action for you all tonight is to receive this report, uh, the Planning Board's recommendation, need public comments, and, uh, provide a motion to either approve the ordinance or disapprove the ordinance. The two findings are required to find, or the map, the map amendment is a reasonable request and in a public interest, and the map amendment is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan, in the area specific, uh, to intergovernmental, intergovernmental relations. Um, I may have had to answer any questions, and I'm happy to defer any questions I may have to be able to provide, and clearly on to the applicant.
Any questions for Chester?
Um, since the parcels are landlocked, is, could the city provide utility services even if it otherwise wanted to?
Uh, no, sir, uh, currently, the, uh, subject parcels are not served by city to the council.
Alright.
Thank you.
Anything else I can promote?
Any other question for Chester?
Awesome, the applicant is prepared, slide a little up.
Thank you, and I believe we did have someone sign up to, to comment on this specific, uh, John was... I'm sorry, did you?
Alright, uh, good evening, congratulations, uh, Jordan, Mr. Seawinder, uh, for the record, I'm John Russell, I'm of, of, resident in Belmont, my office address is in Pennsylvania. I'm here on behalf of an attorney representing, um, the Clean Self Storage, I'll introduce some of the other folks that are here. Um, let me try to start with answering any of the questions from Mr. Heffron earlier, this is another slide of what Chester had, that sort of shows a little more, um, the dark being the, what's currently in the city of Belmont, you know, the ETJ, and the white colored is the county zoning, uh, the red is the C three, is the existing, uh, self-storage facility that you all are familiar with on South Point Road. So, this is intended really as a straight forward application, or a straightforward process, and the idea is to have the, all three parcels, um, under one jurisdiction for purposes of planning and zoning. That way, if there is development, you only have to go through one set of site plan review, you only are needing one set of regulations, whether that's your buffers, or your street treaties, or your setbacks, instead of having, otherwise, if you wanted to develop any of these parcels, you'd have other, as it stands presently, you'd have to go to Gaston County, and you'd have to go to Belmont, and you'd have to design a site plan that meets both of these. I think, um, to answer Mr. Heffron's question, the origin of the split zoning, was there, we think there was an old AT&amp;T utility easement that ran down that line, that center line that we saw, and that's where Belmont originally drew the line. Just sort of as background, this is all in the ETJ, and in recent times, over the last ten years or so, the significance of ETJ, which used to be present to make sure that the areas outside the municipal limits didn't have worked to the no man's lands in terms of zoning, that has gone down, as there's been, number one, changes in state law, which prohibit involuntary utilization, in other words, you can't bring in property without the consent of the landowners, but more importantly, the development of county zoning, so Gaston County's UDO dates from two thousand and seven. When this was created, was probably around the time that Belmont zoning was done, so there's a... But now you've got county zoning that has rules, regulations for all of R one properties that are surrounding there, so in order for any development here, we'd have to have setbacks, we'd have to have buffering, if you've got commercial next to residential and so on. So, the significance of each ETJ, the only time to make is in the last year. The purpose of this is because the Clean Self Storage, which is the applicant, does have a goal of trying to expand their high-end self-storage in this area. As of right now, my understanding from the applicant is, they really have, don't, they don't have that plan in their timeframe, because you really can't design a site plan, and you can't start doing elevations until you know what jurisdiction you're in. So this is really the first step of that process. Um, dur- during the course of this process, we have had work with staff to make sure, there's been some questions about stormwater, and how any additional development would affect the stormwater, so we have Johnny Denton, who's the civil engineer, who's worked for years with the Clean Self Storage, and also Joseph Jody Ahn, who's the stormwater administrator for Gaston County, and I've got some slides. If you had questions, and you can kind of see a little bit of the detention, and they can talk a little bit about that, if that's a question. That came up the Planning Board, that, uh, I think the Planning Board, Johnny and, uh, Jody were helpful in explaining that process. I think the key takeaway is the stormwater ordinance for any development is a county ordinance, it's administered by the county, you have to meet county standards. That's not, that's true whether you're in Belmont or you're not in Belmont, and so that's the case here. Uh, this site currently exceeds the county stormwater standards, but Jody and John actually can speak a little better than I can for that. So that's really the background, again, I'm happy to take any question, we also have Angie Lee from Clean Self Storage, Tripp McLean, who is the principal there, is unfortunately out of town, so Thanksgiving trip, so we're here, and she's bad, but she can talk a little bit about the operation of the site, if you have questions about that, the background, and if any of you have questions, so much that you might turn it over to John, if you have questions.
Let me say, we're talking, are there any questions for the option? No, okay. Alright, well, thank you, Mr. Russell, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, alright, so with no other questions for that presentation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to come out of public hearings. Second. Second by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we have a council public hearing. So that will move us to, uh, agenda item D three, consent ordinance for approval of ZA twenty twenty five point two six gate of road, uh, in decision for relinquish Belmont zoning designation from a portion of three abutting parcels, again, one eight nine eight five, one eight nine eight five six, and two two one five three. So I will open the floor to discussion.
Seems pretty straightforward, does anyone have an issue?
No.
No.
I'd make a motion to approve, uh, the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Alright, motion made by Jim, seconded by Alex, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'd also make a motion that this application is reasonable press, in the public interest, inconsistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan and intergovernmental relations.
Second. Motion made by Jim, seconded by Jason, all in favor?
Um...
All opposed? That passes, thank you. Alright, uh, that will lead us in our modified agenda to item D four, which is a requested amendment to the contract audit campus, I believe, uh, we have Jared Powell's office, correct? To present for this.
Good evening, Mayor Council, I don't have any slides for this item, um, this isn't just a formality. Uh, due to the recent government shutdown, the release of the twenty twenty five compliance supplements of our federal programs was delayed. Um, and so to ensure, that was released last week, um, so this is more for our auditors that have time to review that compliance supplement, make sure that they're auditing our federal programs, uh, to the T of the compliance supplement, so this extends the due date, which is allowable by the LGC, to February sixteen, or, uh, thirteenth, rather, and, um, I don't believe this will delay our audit issuance, um, but this is just a formality to ensure that we have time, in case something comes up and there's additional audit procedures, we have time to complete those and still issue a report on time.
Thank you, Jared, any questions for Jared?
Just making sure, obvious, we could have our ups and downs, and our ever, never-ending seemingly efforts to get off the assistance list, um, we're not going to be penalized for this, obviously, since this delay was due to the federal government and, uh, the shutdown, and not our fault at all.
That's correct, and that's why we need to amend the contract, because the original due date is twelve thirty one, uh, so this ensures that if there was a delay in the audit procedures, that we have time to complete those audit procedures and extend that due date. If we didn't amend, and we submitted after twelve thirty one, and that would result in an automatic finding for a delayed audit, and so we're trying to avoid that, and this is just more of a CYA, not for that.
And just as a point of clarification, this was due, purely due to government shutdown?
Correct, yeah, it was brought to our attention from the auditors last week, and they pushed it to get it as soon meeting as I could, so I discussed with Miles, and knowing that there wasn't going to be a work session this month, we needed to push it to this turn down.
Any questions for Jared? You follow? Thank you, Jared, thank you for putting a lot of effort into that. Over to the best media person.
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve the amendment.
Seconded by Jim, seconded by Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On the amendments, passing this. Okay, so, we'll leave, let's see, item agenda E, we have any reports?
No, sir.
No reports, okay, that moves along to the item agenda F, other business? You want to have any other business?
Just congratulations to the new candidates, welcome aboard, welcome back.
Thank you.
Happy to have you guys excited about the future. Say thank you for your service.
Thank you. Alright, I do have one matter, um...
I think Jim's... Sorry, um, I, I just want to echo congratulations to him, Joe, looking forward to working with you, uh, thank you to, uh, everyone for your kind words, and, and a lot. And, um, Joe, you're off to a great start, I mean, this, you're doing this...
This is the record.
Yeah, this one, way faster than the mine, so, uh, you're, you're off to a...
Hold on, this is where we hit the speed bump, I know, did you?
Yes.
I don't know if your editing skills are going to be quite as...
They're not?
Maybe they are.
I, I, I will say thank you to, uh, the, the warm, uh, re-welcome, I guess, uh, it's, it's nice to, to see old faces and new faces, um, I mean, it's a little, little weird, because the last time I was up there was handing off the gavel to Richard, and I'm in the seat that he held for, for so long, so it's a little bittersweet from that perspective, but I appreciate, um, getting to work with you guys and... Um, in the seat that he held for, for so long, so it's a little bittersweet from that perspective, but I appreciate, um, getting to work with you guys again. Uh, it was definitely very interesting, uh, last time. You know, we started out with COVID, had a financial crisis, and then all kinds of turnover, uh, at both the staff and council levels, and hoping this goes a little less interesting. But, um, that's the fun part about this job, is you never know what it's going to throw at you. Um, I do actually have one, uh, small question, uh, for staff. Um, at the last workshop, the police chief, uh, mentioned openness to, uh, looking at speed bumps on Sixth Street. Uh, I know there's some, uh, pedestrian, possible pedestrian enhancements also being looked at in that area, so we just kind of wanted to see. Uh, I know residents down there are, uh, very, uh, attuned, uh, to, to that, so just kind of want to see where we are with, uh, those efforts and, uh, what we can do, and maybe to get over the finish line.
Yes, and I do have a debate for that, um, we are in the process of bidding out our payment contract. It's out of bid currently, um, the bids are due December, uh, I don't have it here. Bids are due December nineteenth, um, as part of the payment contract, we included an alternate bid that would include the extension of Avenue Great Greenway down to Sixth Street. Um, and also connecting the existing sidewalks to Avenue Great Greenway. Uh, with that project also entails a raised pedestrian crossing, that is to cross over Sixth Street, so, um, uh, the intent of a, of a speed hump would be the pedestrian crossing through there. Um, and of course, this project is, like I say, out of bid, once we get the bids in, see what the prices are with the alternate bid, then, of course, that comes back to you all, uh, for approval at that time. And if staff recommends the price on, on the, on the payment project, and to include that alternate bid, so, um. Yes, we heard it, yes, we heard the process, we also heard about connecting the, completing the, the greenway in that, in that section too, so we thought we could do all that when we had a payment contractor, under contract.
Okay, yeah, no, that's great, so like, what we're kind of envisioning here is like basically a raised pedestrian crossing.
I think that's the intent of the bid, uh, there's plans inside it, but what I saw was it said a raised pedestrian crossing, um, that would connect, um, the sidewalk home. This side of Sixth Street to, to the, to the greenway.
Oh, yeah, that's fantastic, because, um, I, uh, walked through that neighborhood while I was campaigning, and I know that they would definitely appreciate whatever we can do for them back there, so.
Fifty miles, sir.
Hi, Eugene. Sorry, usually we go, I'm not, I'm a blowout sort of thing. So, first of all, um, thank you, Jim, again, I know I was a little long-winded, but again, I got to say it again, thank you again for everything you've done for this council, I really do mean that. You've become a great friend, but a great mentor as well, in regards to a lot of, uh, challenging things that we've seen over the past couple of years. Mark, congratulations, Mayor, congratulations. Um, Miles, quick question for you, so on the yard waste program, do we have an update on where we stand with that, particularly as it pertains to ourself popular street? Um, in regards to how we were talking about, I believe last time we talked about we were going to order the bins, but I just wanted to see where we are on that, because I've had a few people reach out asking for an update.
We did, you all approved the motion amendment, approved the ordinance amendment, um, the last meeting, I don't know where we stand with the actual purchase of the, the bins. There's probably, uh, time to order and the delivery, I don't know, I'm kind of looking back at this, Jonathan, if you can. Jonathan, do you have any update on the delivery timeframe for bins? If it's a no, just shake your head no. What I can do is get that for you all, and I can share that through a council update.
I think your council update would be fine, just the timeline on that, I've had a few folks reaching out, but I guess that just pertains to the ordinance itself. Again, I know we've gone on and forth on this, but if they have a can that's reasonable, can they put that out in their front yard right now?
Reasonable subject. Yeah, so, so the ordinance states that if you want the can, you need to purchase the can from the city, so it can be the city can. But also said that I know that there's people out there that have cans, and we're not going to hit anybody over the head, uh, if they put their can out there, but if it's, and if it's broken heavy and not prepared, that we can pick up. There's a likely, we will, we will get it, we'll say, you need our can, so that's kind of how we plan to go through it. Um, you know, through this process, we're a complaint-based code enforcement. So this is how the thing started, it was complaint-based, we've been picking up yard waste on Popular Street for fifty years. I don't know how that makes sense. And then it come, it comes down to, you know, there's an issue of where the things are placed now, so of course, we're complaint-based, we have to address it, so we kind of roll it out, so if you. We, we picked up the yard waste where the things were placed previous, we have an ordinance for a reason, we, everybody needs to abide by the ordinance, but if you do put your can out there, uh, more than likely, we'll get it. If it's something that, like I said, it's something too heavy, we can't manage, then we can get our can.
Well, really, like a, some sort of communication for people, where like, we skipped the can, so they're not thinking that we just missed it.
We do have like an updated flyer, I don't know if we're going to go around and stick notes all over cans, if we're not picking up our cans or not. If, if it's, um, if it's a can that we can't get, then everyone likely will have to communicate to the, the resident, I think we can't pick up this can. Um, if you place your items in the sidewalk or on the street, we'd probably get a letter, uh, from the city, uh, not to put in those areas if we've kind of adjusted the, the ordinance there.
Not to split there, is probably, can we do a call truck picking those up or by hand?
Uh, the, the cans?
Mm-hmm.
T- the cans are picked up by employees, if you have like the, the pile of yard waste, and that's when the call truck gets those, but, um. If you have a can, we've got that rear loader truck, that's why we want to use our cans, because we get tippled without having, uh, folks get out and, uh. Manhandle a little, like, you know, if real heavy, uh, garbage can that's, that's slammed, but we don't, you know, don't know the weight of that, so.
Uh, it doesn't have wheels or something?
The cost of the, the Belmont sponsored can has, I think it was eighty five?
Eighty five.
It was eighty five? Um, that's fully approved, yeah, the cost of can. One time, one time cost is eighty five.
Charlie?
No, just congratulations.
Congratulations, yes. Welcome to the Thunderdome. Okay, so I do have one item that, uh, when I was meeting the piles, we were talking about, dated twenty twenty six, um, that the December workshop, uh, there was not a need to have a December workshop. Uh, so that's something that everyone is agreeable to, I'll.
That was counted on.
That was counted on.
Why'd you say eight? I thought I was counting on it.
Yeah. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to remove. I made a motion.
Second.
All right, motion by Jason, seconded by Alex, all in favor?
Uh.
All opposed. All right, well, we'll move that on the schedule.
Shortening the meeting and renewing.
But listen, listen, I, I do want to. I do want to thank you all, um, for helping me follow through my first meeting, um, but the, the support has been very helpful. Jim, you've been a great help to me transitioning over into this role, uh, and I know that if something comes out wrong, you'll be right there for me, and I appreciate that.
That's, that's true, however, I am enjoying the view from over here.
But, but regardless, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, thank you for the faith that, uh, residents have put in me, it was a humbling experience to go through. Uh, to, to have your community rally around you, so it was a really neat thing, and I greatly appreciated that. Uh, but with that said, uh, Merry Christmas, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, motion made by Alex, seconded by Charlie, all in favor?
Uh.
Merry Christmas.